We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Next we have our employee recognitions, which you are all here for. I'm sure you're not here for anything else. Okay, first we have Kimberly Juddell. Did I pronounce the last name correct?
That's correct.
And Kimberly has fifteen years' worth of service.
I've never done this before. It's okay.
Well, congratulations on fifteen years of dedicated service. I'll give you dedicated service to Clay County citizens.
Thank you very much.
And Larry.
Kim was one of the workers in my unit that worked with people sixty-five and older, which is either in the nursing homes or community. We were talking about fifty-five, forty-five as the percentage of cases in nursing home and still in the community. Recently, we received a letter from one of the families that she worked with, and I won't read the whole letter, but the heart of it was indicating the type of person Kim is, that there was not a question that Kim wasn't willing to answer, no matter how big or how small it was, which is great to see. And it was a tough situation for the daughter, for her mother's needs, and Kim just made the transition just seamless and made it very comfortable for her and the whole family. So, thank you, Kim, for what you do. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tracy Bedford. Tracy also has fifteen years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County. Thank you very much. Nancy?
I would just like to thank Tracy for her fifteen years of service. It's great to have an individual that stays in a position that long, and we're very thankful for that. She does a great job in customer service in one of her big programs, is the Veterans Center in Clay County, and she just does a really good job in ensuring that everything is good and accurate for them. So, thank you, Tracy, for your years of service.
Mark has twenty years of dedicated and outstanding service to Clay County citizens. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Brian?
Well, yes.
Can I just sit down for a while?
No, I was gonna say, you worked longer than I have, so you could probably cover this better than I can, but when Tracy started talking about working with people over sixty-five, I started feeling pretty old. Then I revived myself. You said ones that are unfortunately have to be in nursing homes and things. Anyway, yeah, we're gonna talk about Mark just a little bit. Mark is just a fantastic guy, and his mind kinda just sits there and wanders over many, many different issues. Am I right? Yeah, he sits there thinking about what can be done a little better, and frankly, he volunteered for our, what's the, the?
Strive.
Strive, no, not the strive for excellence, but the lean. He volunteered as a structure in the lean because he wants to see everything just improve a little bit better and work a little bit better in the county. It's really nice to work with people like that. And during this whole projects that we have, and you've heard me before talk about the teamwork that has taken place with all these projects that are going on, starting with this county board right here, but working down to every department, it's just been fantastic. And when I've needed a little help with laying something out and how do we get pictures up here and how do we work this over here, I go and I talk with Mark a little bit, and besides doing a fantastic job with his GIs and everything, okay, I'll shut up. He is just willing to step forward and do those extra things, Mark, and we really appreciate that around here. So, twenty years of that, it's really great. So, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Diane is a neighbor of mine. We go back a long time.
Long time.
Yeah, we've been through an awful lot of political things, going through things together.
Through committees.
Through committees together, and we're glad to have her here as an employee in Clay County. Diane also has twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Brian?
And do I get to say something about Diane, too? Now, Diane, this was an interesting process. When Diane became the recorder, we went through a process where we went from the elected position to an appointed position, and she was just very supportive all through that process as well. Plus, again, talking about our projects, she does just an excellent job down in the recorder's office, keeping everything going, and the customer service is really important to them, and that's really, really important to us as a county. But she, too, was willing to step forward, work with any documents that we needed through this transition process, with these building projects that we have going on, and just really helps clarify things. So Diane is really a solid person to count on in the county, and thank you for your work here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, our next item is citizens to be heard. Seeing none in the audience this morning, we'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second. You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from June twentieth.
So move.
Second. You have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, our next item, we have, we'd like to give recognition to Randall's Excavating Inc. for a two thousand dollar contribution to the Sheriff's K-9 program. These things are, that's quite a nice contribution, and we thank Randall's very much for the support of law enforcement and the K-9 program. It's very nice to see, so thank you. We'll move in. Today is a, with the holiday week, today was a short meeting, and so the remaining item we have is our committee reports. And Mr. Wayland, we'll start with you today.
Let's see, the only thing I had was we had Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Board meeting last week, and I think things are continuing to go pretty well there. Had some issues, but they're working on, we've had some litigation going on, and they're working on settling that now, and hopefully that'll be resolved in the very near future. That was it for me.
Brian?
Okay, I went to the Moritz Center, Moritz had a, the Emco Center, what they're planning on doing with Center Avenue. They're looking at whether to put in turn lanes, bicycles, and stuff like that, so pegged harder for Santa Tech, but it gave a presentation what the plan is for Center Avenue, and took a lot of comments there. I don't know, quite a few people there making suggestions on there, so they're just looking at what they're gonna do, just in the planning stages there. Also, then I went to Behavioral Health Committee for the jail. There we had a lot of discussion on whether we should contract for professional services or just hire or whatever, you know, so we're looking at going from two hours a week to ten, ten hours or more per week, so we're looking at how we're gonna pay for that, you know, with, working with Lakeland on that. Discussed a little bit about spacing, where we're gonna put, if we do hire somebody, where they would be placed, you know, whether it be in the law enforcement center or in the jail and stuff like that. Also looking at combining that with the juvenile center. So, professional services, they give us figures of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, so if we go part-time service, ninety-two thousand dollars. So, they, I mean, we're starting to come together with some figures there, you know, so which way we wanna go on it. And then we talked about the reentry program there, too, and the ministry program.
I'll just piggyback off that really quick, and what Commissioner Gross talked a little bit about is if we were to contract for that, that figure would be close to three hundred thousand dollars, and so if we were thinking, could we piecemeal between different departments on campus that may need this? Lakeland is flexible in doing that, and we did also talk about some funding streams that we could look twice.
Yeah, 'cause, well, changes evolve with Lakeland and with the behavioral, so quite a bit more knowledgeable on that, you know, so.
Can I just make comment, maybe ask a question? The, I'm glad that that is being looked at, you know, contracting versus maybe just being actually, you know, partly on campus. One of the things that we also need to keep in mind as we look forward here is the juvenile detention, and that's not getting any smaller, and, you know, I think we're gonna be hearing pretty soon about, you know, expanding, the potential expansion of that, going from a thirty-three bed secure to a sixty-four bed secure, potentially, so.
I think that's why I was thinking, looking at getting Steve Larson part of the committee, and getting him involved, because they will be doing, you know, juvenile will be needing more of it, you know.
So those dollar amounts that you talked about there, was one number with juvenile and one without?
No. It's classification of the professional.
Oh, okay.
You're gonna pay more for a higher classification, but those figures are full-time. I mean, that would be full-time.
One was professional service, one was practitioner service. Also on.
Can you?
Go ahead.
One more, one more thing while you're talking about that, have we, have we looked to the state for any potential, or are we getting any?
Yeah.
We're, we're working on it.
The next, next meeting, we're, I don't know if they've committed yet or not, but we're bringing legislators to the meeting, hopefully to work with them also, and see if we can get the state involved in that.
Very good. I think they would have interest in that.
Right, and there are, you know, the makeup of that committee, you know, Pat Boyer and Rhonda Porter and Gina Nolte, those individuals understand where dollars are available, and while it's tricky because you don't wanna, you know, shortchange a program if they're using those dollars, they know better than we do as to where to look.
Very good. Okay, I'm sorry for making.
No, go ahead. That's interesting. It's, I mean, it's left, we can share.
Oh, yeah, it's a key component to what we wanna do.
Yeah, very big, very key. Let's see, when was it, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday afternoon?
Thursday afternoon.
Thank you for, I didn't need a reminder, waste sort. Some of you missed that sorting from.
I was really busy. I was at the doctor's office.
No, we, they had collected garbage from ninety homes, and they dumped it on the floor over the landfill, not land, whatever the garbage.
Transfer, transfer station.
Transfer station. And there was a few of us that volunteered to come that day to sort through this kitty litter and dog, and dog stuff, whatever you wanna call it, to come out with percentages of what, how much recycling is going into the garbage. And I don't even know if I wanna talk about it or not, but it was interesting. It was an interesting day, two and a half hours of, with a white suit, we all looked like we were in a surgery room somewhere going through garbage, and it was enough set. Okay, then we had highway tracking this morning, and there we discussed the closing of the buildings at Rollock and Hallie, they're gonna be closed, I mean, hopefully getting the final papers done on that. We're looking at the Saban project, if you remember, the mayor from Saban was in there, and he was concerned about stuff, and we looking at approving some sort of pedestrian crosswalk where you push a button, and, you know, we're looking at putting that, that's what we came up with now for that. And we're looking at the repayment schedule for the highway landfill shop, we're looking at probably five years, get that paid off. And we're also looking at some Twelfth Avenue, which we worked with Moritz, we turned back some, a half mile back to Moritz, but we did improvements on it, and we still owe five hundred thousand on that, so we're looking at payment schedule there. And that was it for that. And that was my meetings.
Commissioner.
On Tuesday last week, I attended the Center Avenue Development Program at the Emcomst, and it was very interesting, the options they're looking at, making it so it's more accessible for closing it off for street dances and things like that, and special events, and turning that into kinda the place where that would happen in the future going down the road, and it was very informative, a lot of people there. And on Thursday, I attended the beginning of the waste sort, I had to take my dad to the vet's hospital that afternoon, but I got there long enough to see Commissioner Gross with his plutonium suit on and take his picture, and the prelim, or the final, or the preliminary count on it was it was twenty-two percent recyclables that were in the waste stream, which is about what we, when back when I was on the Solid Waste Committee, they were estimating twenty to twenty-five percent recyclable in there, and that fell well within that. And I didn't stay as long as Commissioner Gross did.
Yeah, you, twenty-three percent recyclables, the other eighty percent I'm talking.
Yeah.
But that, think of that twenty-two percent's been going into our landfill, it doesn't need to.
It is amazing, I mean, when you look at twenty-two percent, but just the volume it takes up, you know, the plastic does not go down, you know, and wood does not go down and stuff like that, so it is amazing what the twenty-two percent is, though, as far as volume.
And that was, yesterday, I attended the City of Moritz Planning Commission, and we approved vacation of Eastman's preliminary and final plaid of the Farmstead second addition in the City of Moritz, and rezoning from medium density one to high density one to make senior living apartments just south of the Mermey unit where the Farmstead is there. And of course, that went through, and, and let's see, there was one other thing we approved there, oh, and that was the making the property down where the old power plant was available for development now. The Botanical Garden Group is out of the picture now and saw the city needed approval to get that going, and that's what we approved yesterday, was to put, to change the designation of that property so that there are portions of it that can be developed. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Well, I forgot my planner, so I apologize, I didn't bring my notes, but last week I attended the Behavioral Health Committee like Commissioner Gross said, and I think the most important piece to add is we are really close to three or four really strong recommendations for this, this committee or this group, and while we understand their costs associated with that, I think that the commitment that we made is that that's what we wanted. We really wanted to make sure that we address the mental health component in that population, so more to be heard on that. I had a Lakes and Prairies meeting last week as well, and I'll have to report on my other committees next week. The other question I had is I had noticed that the Clay County Fair is advertising the Government Day that's happening next Thursday, Brian, and they advertised it as a children's educational opportunity to meet with department heads. Do we have people that will be out there for the fair?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, the Highway Department will be out there, the Sheriff's Department will be out there, Solid Waste deals with the recycling on an ongoing basis, and we have in the past tried public health and social services and just a number of the different other ones, and we received so little interest on it, but the ones that we do receive interest on is the Sheriff's Office, the Highway Department, and Solid Waste and their recycling programs. So, yes, they will be out there.
Great. Can we have Sheriff's, the Sheriff's Office have a diagram of the new buildings that are going up? I think when it comes to public interest, that's something that people are really interested in, seeing what's going on. That wouldn't necessarily need someone to be staffed next to it, but just.
I think something on an easel, I think.
That's a very good idea. No, hadn't thought of that, but that's excellent. We've got some excellent posters out here that they can utilize.
Great, I'm glad you've addressed that, 'cause I just, it really is, because they're advertising it, I really, I really want county presence there, so.
Very good.
That concludes my reports, I think.
Okay, I also attended the Public Input Meeting on the Center Avenue Corridor in Moritz, and I, certainly there was a lot of interesting options, and what could be done with that. It's, as we know, it's currently a four lane, and one of the options is to turn it into a three lane with a center turn lane in either direction, and even with that, there, it would fall within the capacity limits going up until the year two thousand and forty, the projected traffic volumes due to two thousand and forty. The whole reason they're doing this is they're looking at a mill and overlay in two thousand and nineteen, and so while they're doing that, the infrastructure underneath it is good, but they wanna redo the road, and it's time to look at, there's a, maybe there's a couple of access points that could hinder traffic to some degree. There's some areas where the site isn't very good, and then so there's, there's been some collision issues there. Fourth Street. Yeah, Fourth Street is one. So, so that was very interesting, and there was, I thought it was a really nice turnout of people there for that, so there's really some community interest in that, and I noticed there was several members of the Moritz Business Association there, so that was good. Then we had the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste meeting that Commissioner Wayland reported on, and the, the, you know, we did talk about the budget, and the budget appears to still be on track for two thousand and seventeen, which is good. The superheatier issue and the lawsuit there, our board did vote to authorize a settlement for a dollar amount of four hundred thousand dollars. That's public, that was done in a public vote, so the, what we know is that there was a request on the other party's part to settle for three seventy, that they would agree to three seventy, and we felt that was too light, so we're countering that to four hundred. Then this morning, we had the Highway Tracking Meeting, which Commissioner Gross reported on, and, you know, if you wanna just pass these around, you can see these, those are the types of deals that we're looking at that Dave's researched, and I think he's gonna ultimately make a recommendation to Saban on one of them. I don't know, Dave, if you wanna comment on it at all, but it certainly seems like it's a reasonable solution. We're looking at anywhere from six thousand on one, for the one style to approximately eighty-five hundred on the other one.
Total or cost shared?
That's total for both. Well, that, no, that's the total cost for both lights, then it would be cost shared.
Right, okay.
Fifty-fifty, so. So it's a, I think it's a reasonable solution to a very busy intersection. Dave, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, or?
So, from what I've read and what I've researched a little bit, there's two options there. There's LED blinking sign, and then there's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon has a little bit more safety numbers to it as far as they think it causes a little more factor of safety out there. It flashes all directions, side to side, and I think it's probably just a little, it's a little more, a little more safe, kind of, you know, costs a little bit more, but for the most part, they're both good options, and I guess based on the traffic and based on the amount of, you know, the situation we're in, there's a little curve there, it's a pretty main highway in the county, I guess I would maybe lean on the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Our share would be about forty-three hundred dollars or so, if the city would agree to split fifty-fifty.
And I think that was the consensus of our tracking committee, too, that, you know, the sole purpose why we're talking about this is for safety, and so if we're talking about for safety, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we, for a thousand dollars more to get the safest thing possible, it would be silly for us not to do it, so.
Great, well, I really appreciate you looking into that. I know Saban really appreciates that.
So I think you're gonna, you'll go back to Saban now, and hopefully they'll agree to that, and we can get that going.
I know the gentleman that was here, he did also do a little research, and he felt following the same thing.
Right.
He kinda leaned on the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or at least what he had heard, and I would guess they're gonna lean in the same direction.
Right, well, keep me in the loop when you go out there. Thanks.
All right, that concludes my report. Oh, we did, we did also meet to discuss the boiler situation at the, regarding the power plant, and I know you guys through the Building Committee have researched that issue, and I think we're, we've asked Klein McCarthy to look at one of the options that does put in that newer, smaller, two-hundred-and-fifty horsepower burner, that I think it's been discussed here before, and I think it's, it still fits within our budget from our jail project, so I don't know if you have any more questions on it, but that's kinda where, and I think Brian plans on giving a more detailed report on that to the board, is it next week, maybe, Brian, or a week or something?
So that would be part of the, improving the boiler would be part of the jail, I think.
Yes, well, yeah, 'cause it's, you know, we're adding this gourfeet from the jail, yet it'll still, with that one, it, you're gonna, you're gonna hear more from Brian later, but it's also, it's gonna be much more economical. We're not gonna see waste, we're not gonna see boilers running that don't need to be run, so it's, you know, I know, you can maybe direct some more questions to Brian, because he's, you know. Brian, do you wanna comment?
Sure, sure, yeah, I did have Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, we did talk about that, and what we've asked the architects and the construction engineers now is to get some pricing on it. We have some ballpark pricing on it, but what the committee feels, and maybe I should drag this back to this board, in two thousand and twelve, we did some capital improvements, and one of the things we studied, we have two five-hundred horsepower boilers sitting over in that power plant, and in the off-seasons, they run in order to supply hot water to the juvenile center and the jail and things along those lines, way over or underutilized. And then during this study now, we found that the pipe restricts the amount of heat that's coming out of those five-hundred boilers, they should, that should be increased, but yet eight months out of the year, we're firing up a five-hundred horsepower boiler when we need two hundred horsepower of steam. So, we really thought of putting in that small boiler before, and now we're thinking that the time is right to do it, because eight months out of the year, two-hundred-and-fifty horsepower boiler will be sufficient to meet the needs, and so that's will be our main workhorse, and then we'll fire up the other, the five-hundred horse to help meet the needs in the cold weather, and then we're still gonna have that third boiler, which, by the way, those two boilers are like fifty-four years old, but they're still in good shape, so we're still gonna use, utilize them, so it's really nice to have that two-hundred-and-fifty horse. And we feel, I think quite strongly, that we're going to be able to add that jail and heat it and use the extra hot water for all the showers and things with bringing all the prisoners back in. We probably won't increase our energy costs at all, adding that new jail because of these efficiencies that we're adding. That's at least what we think, and we're being told somewhat that there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained, so. And what he says by bringing a formal request to you, we're gonna bring that to before the board because it's an addition, and it's quite a move, 'cause we're talking in the area of three hundred, maybe three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But remember now, this is for the heating of the new jail, and there was not a heat plant in place in the design, the intent was to always use the current heating plant to on that jail, so.
Well, one of the important things, too, though, is, you know, we have this incorporated into our, what was our original budget plan for the correctional facility, so it's, so the dollars have been anticipated to be used.
That's exactly right.
It's not like we're having to come up with new.
Come up with new monies.
New monies for it, so.
No, that's exactly right.
Yeah. But it's, 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 it's another new investment item that will, you know, will be good out for the next probably forty years. And the current boilers we have now are both, what, forty years old, I think?
Fifty-four, I think.
Fifty-four years old.
Are they gonna replace the pipes?
Yes.
One of them, yes. Yep, one of them. One of them, yes. Yeah, one of them. And even replacing that main, I'll say exhaust pipe that feeds the line is, that's about a forty-two thousand dollar pipe fitting that needs to go in there. So everything just costs a dang much money nowadays. It seems like they do things cheap. So.
Okay. Brian, I will move into your report.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Several of the things have been already addressed. We actually had two, two highway tracking meetings, one right after our last board meeting.
Yeah.
And we had, it was one this morning to kind of clean up those loose ends. And the big discussion, of course, was that safety issue at Saban and, and then the financing and some things, which really went well. One other meeting that we attended last Tuesday with Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell was a regional workforce idea, referenced the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Commission, which is, it was just kind of a brainstorming idea to, to bring together the two counties in this, Clay County and Cass County, in regards to thinking of ideas of how to meet the needs of the workforce around here. And I, I think it, I mean, it was very early in the infancy stages. And I think Jim Gartner, the director over there, was going to come back to the boards for a request of personnel to be appointed to this committee then, if I'm right, Mr. Chair?
Yes, that's correct.
I think that was kind of the discussion. So it was early discussion in regards to that. But the concept was really good. There's a shortage of workforce around here. And how do you bring people in? How do you train the people, the local people that we have, rather than bringing people in? How do we train and bring these people in to, to pay a, a livable wage to do these, these, this work that needs to be done around here? And that was kind of the general discussion. Then I had a meeting with Kirk in regards to recycling. He's been talking to a couple of different companies, Waste Management and Mincota, in, in the future expansion of the recycling and the sorting and different things that's going to take place around here. And I think it's going down a real positive road to, I hate to overuse the word, public-private partnership, but that's exactly what we're looking at here, is using a firm to, to help fund and, and run the recycling plant, if that can get off the ground in regards to that. Then I also did have, we talked about the boiler plant study. I think there's some positive news there, too. Then I had a couple-hour meeting, referenced the P three in preparation for the finalization of it this summer. And that's going along really well. But it's really detailed work as well. And the Behavioral Health Meeting, that's really, for the commissioners that are not on that committee, that has really turned into be an excellent committee with a lot of exciting work to, to augment and supplement, or to focus on in regards to this new correctional facility. Because remember, the title of it is Correctional Facility. And that's why the committee was formed, to concentrate on how do we change the behavior of people that are in custody. And I think there's some really terrific ideas coming out of there, and some good support mechanism. Frankly, it's already happened. Some funding was switched to, to pay for some extended training for the correctional officers. That was one of the seven goals, was to train all the correctional officers in behavioral health issues. And that's already in the process of being done. That was really a positive thing. Working on budget preparation, we'll, we'll hopefully have a presentation to you next week, I think it is, next Tuesday already?
Oof da.
Cheepers, craps. Oof da. Anyway, we'll have some, some information for you on that. We also, as a result of a meeting that we had here a week or two ago in regards to the City of Morehead and, the, the City of Morehead and Clay County, and working together on the diversion concept, and have talked about maybe a letter to the governor. And that'll be being brought to this board next week. We'll put it on the agenda for a discussion. But the City of Morehead and Clay County are working on a, a joint letter to ask the governor for some support on, and on opening communications again in regards to that with DNR. So a little more to come on that next week then. And, oh, one thing we, I, I tried to do last week was to bring you up to date on the changes and change orders that are taking place with the parking lots out front. And I explained to you that the Highway Department is, has people on site every day, every day they're working, there's people on site there. And you know, there was a lot of extra soil, organic soil that was taken out. That was really kind of a big bite. And then there was an old basement. So I asked Dave to stick around today to kind of go over those, not to ask for approval of the change orders. Because as I explained last week, they're kind of running this like they do a road project, where they, they, they keep constant attention to what's going on, not to slow the projects down. And then they bring in the changes at the end for your approval on this. So I asked him today to give you more of a detailed update on it, so.
Yeah. So what we are doing is, we're currently using our one-office construction software, just like any other paving job. We're cutting partial estimates, partial payments once a month, like we normally do. The original bid, if you remember, for this parking lot, it was all three parking lots, one up front, one in the northwest, and then the overlay, was about nine hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. The first payment for the work done to date was about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so maybe a quarter of the way through or so. The changes that Brian talked about add up to about eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Over and above the nine oh eight?
Correct, yeah. We've got about an eighty thousand dollar overrun. Eric's currently looking at possible savings on the lot on the northwest corner. If we can skinny it up by maybe an inch or so, being that we have so much gravel that's out there. Some, some of that gravel needs to be overex, you know, excavated and the concrete put on. We're not getting a lot of warm, fuzzy feelings from the contractor because I'm sure he wants to sell concrete. So it doesn't look like the deduct is going to, might not be worth it. But we're looking into that. If I could just run through the, the six changes that we had out there so far. Change number one was adding a catch basin to capture some additional drainage by Ninth Street and Eleventh Avenue. That was about eighteen hundred dollars. Work order number two was, we initially planned for some little straw biologs, they're called, around the perimeter of the project. And it was best thought to put the silt fence up, which is what you normally see. So there was a, that was about a seven hundred dollar change there. Work order number three was adding some painted crosswalk out on Eleventh Street there, kind of so they could keep the traffic over to where they're parking. Some of the, the staff is parking over at the school. Work order number four was the biggest one. That's one Brian mentioned, where we had two feet of organic material that was unsuitable for putting a parking lot on. So that was sixty-eight thousand dollars alone. In doing that, we also encountered the old foundation of the old courthouse. That was about ten and a half thousand dollars. So right there, the total over, total change was eighty thousand, six fifty-six. That accounted for seventy-eight thousand, seven twenty-nine. So almost all that right there. The last work order we had was, we run into, there's all kinds of utilities in the Bullfire there. And we were connecting on one of the storm sewer leads from Tenth Street there. We were taking that off. And we had like a twenty, or a twelve-inch of concrete pipe, like a lead pipe going into our new inlet. It wouldn't snake between the, between the utilities. So we put like an eight-inch plastic pipe, actually saved us twenty-one hundred dollars on that one. So some minor changes, some major changes. But where we're sitting at today is about eighty thousand, six fifty-six over. All the digging should be done. I would expect any major changes should be, we should be through the, the woods on that, so.
How about, how about that little redo on the ADA issue? Is that, is that figured in on that sixty-eight thousand?
No, I don't, I don't believe we're, we're.
Not to that, not to that change order yet?
Correct, yeah. That's probably max case, I think, going to be around five thousand dollars or so. It was, it was kind of, it was shared by some of us, us and some with the contractor on that. But the good thing is, it's all done correctly. It's all meets, meets standards. It looks a lot better.
Well, it's moving along.
Yeah, yeah, they're really moving. Now, they got two crews out there today. So I would think by, with middle of next week, towards the end of next week, the whole front should be pretty well wrapped up.
So Kevin can put his handprints in it today?
I think he could, yeah. We have a special spot there for some commissioners.
The Wakafeen.
Wakafeen, there you go.
Aren't you funny? All right. Well, thank you for giving that report, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. All right. Well, Dave, make sure you tell your guys, thanks for doing that work. That's actually saved us in other ways by not having to have somebody else out there, so.
We've got a few full-time guys out there, most part timers, and actually a few tester who's good.
Yeah. But in a reminder, we will be having the Klein McCarthy and construction engineers will be giving a report. I know Commissioner Gross should be gone. But we're going to be giving a report on these projects next Tuesday morning. So with that, we will be adjourned.